Okay, welcome everyone. This regular meeting of the Central Branch Regional School Committee will now come to order on May 10th, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Just a note to the audience, this meeting is being both audio and video recorded, and are there any members of the audience recording this meeting? Seeing none, we'll continue on. At this moment, all who are able, please stand up and plug their hands. I'll plug your hands. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. This is where the State goes ahead.
Dr. Patrice?
Yes.
Ms. Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Mr. Farley? Mr. Gazillo?
Here.
Mr. Hagmeyer, I don't see. Mr. Hagmeyer's not here, is he? I thought I saw him. Mr. Hagmeyer, are you in the audience? Mr. Hopper?
Here.
Is here. Ms. Keith is not here. Mr. Larkattel?
Here.
Mrs. Ladizori?
Here.
Didn't see Mr. Les. Uh, Mr. Peters, I saw.
Mr. Les will be up.
Okay, Mr. Les will not be here. Mrs. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Amorcos?
Here.
We have an open seat in Washington. Mr. Bartels is here.
Here.
Hello. Our CBA rep is not here tonight, and our student rep, Isaac, is here. We have a forum.
Okay, thank you. The Chair certifies this agenda as valid in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Sections 18 and 25. At this time, we'll hear response from the audience. Would anyone like to address the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on. Student Affairs, Zach, your report.
So, in sports, with just three weeks left in the spring season, we kind of had wins just about across the board this past week. And one, I didn't quite get to find out about before I left, the boys lacrosse game was stationed up right when this meeting was. It was a close game, and I kept some treats about it, but I can't. The Unified Track Team had any issue, and actually, we're home for a thought on next Wednesday, so it's a really good event, and I recommend seeing if you can. We're writing a little of the AP exams with the chemistry, physics, English, literature, and programming exams have done already. All right, they've been taken already, and the biology, calculus, English Language, Statistics exams are next week, so good luck to any of those. Seniors just have five and a half days left of school. And then the week after that, the 21st is finals week for them, and then just after that is senior week before the class trip to Boston, and senior Sunday graduation next Sunday, so it's really getting to a point. And then, even though we're out of school, a lot of stuff going on, so it's really exciting. A lot of people are getting ready, and kind of. We also have Hannah Prelle here, who will be taking over for me next year, so.
Hopper, Hannah?
Welcome, Hannah.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Zach. Does anyone have any questions for Zach? I understand this is your last meeting with us.
Right.
Okay, well, thanks for your service over the year. I'm very happy that you participated in many of the meetings, you're here for most of the meeting, and that's a good thing, so I, with Hannah, will encourage that you do the same. And certainly, if you want to be, have opinions that you'd like to put forward, and when we have topics that come up, that's going to be welcomed as well. You have a voice on the committee.
Yes, and this is for you, Zach, and I have known Zach for a while. We met on a Latin trip when you were a freshman, right?
Yeah.
That long ago? So I just want to thank you very much and congratulate you. This is a big role to take on, to sit with 15 adults that you don't know that well, myself and the administration, and I just remember when I met you as a freshman, to think that you joined us this year in this capacity, and now you're moving on. Where are you, did you decide on UMass?
Oh, I decided on UMass.
Congratulations. So congratulations. You've made a whole year progression, and talk about, talk about a success, so congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Greg has the box, if you'd like that for the car ride home.
Okay, thanks again, Zach. Congratulations. Next order of business, the Secretary's report. Would a member please make the motion to accept the minutes of the meeting of April 26th?
Move to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of April 26th, 2018, as printed.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the minutes of the meeting of April 26th. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. Next is warrants. Would a member please make the motions for the warrants?
Move to approve warrant number 2018-41, dated May 11th, 2018. Accounts payable in the amount of $311,295.28.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number 2018-41. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extension, same? An extension, a motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR-2018-44, dated May 3rd, 2018. Payable in the amount of $573,082.28.
We have a motion in a second to approve warrant number PR-2018-44. Is there any discussion?
There's a study form.
Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Same.
An extension, a motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number 2018-144D, dated May 3rd, 2018. Accounts payable in the amount of $106,547.62.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve warrant number 2018-44 Delta. An extension? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Same. An extension, a motion carries.
And CM, who goes first.
Okay, thank you for your comment. All right, under the report of the Chair, we have still a vacancy in the town of Washington. Also, the next two topics, I'm going to turn over to the Superintendent, they are status of Wacona Regional High School bathrooms, and also the Nescus Middle School parent concerns for our 26th April meeting.
So, to start with the Wacona bathroom, so hopefully everyone was able to have read through the letter that I sent to Mrs. Town, thanking her for bringing those concerns to our attention. Several of those concerns we had had a plan in place for and were ultimately resolved. A couple of them, we put a plan in place for and will be resolved by the end of the year. So, very fortunately, we are able to say at this time, the bathrooms are all functional at Wacona, giving far more options specifically to the female students, and they will become even more functional, and we actually, the last step is putting on the doors, as two of our school community members have experienced. If you haven't seen it, you might not fully understand, but there is shower curtains where doors should be, and we are replacing that with doors. So, by the end of this year, all bathroom facilities at Wacona will be fully functional. There are some limitations due to the age of the buildings, and certainly would be remedied with a new building, but we will have everything we are able to have in operating order. So that's been a good improvement. I have followed up with the parent who brought the concern forward, and she was happy with the resolution. Any questions about that? Kind of a cut and dry, objective one, if you will.
So, in the first paragraph, what you, it's 14 female student restroom fixtures, right?
Yes.
It's not?
Actual bathrooms.
But, oh, it is?
No, it's actually the fixtures. You're saying it's not actual bathrooms, it's actual?
Fixtures?
Yes.
Okay. And that appears twice.
Okay. Any questions on those topics? Okay. The next topic is the Superintendent evaluation. Just recently passed out these forms that you should all have before you. Some of you are familiar with how we move forward with this, and I'm going to explain the process anyways, just to make sure we're all clear.
I wonder if the other concern or not?
Right. Isn't she just talking?
Bathrooms. Do you want me to cover best case in my report? Or now?
Yeah.
Okay, so back up. So we covered the bathroom concerns. If you look at my report, there's a more extensive report. So what we had a concern brought to the committee about was a pretty specific concern about a subgroup of students. However, I think that the more transparent answer is that there is an overall culture concern that we do have at Nescus right now, and that we are working through, and I think I say that on behalf of Pete and Joanne. I don't think I say that without their support, and I certainly would not speak if I wasn't sure that they were in agreement. You've seen multiple sources of data that have come forward regarding this concern. We had a full comprehensive program review done this fall by the Department of Ed. They had some pretty tough, tough data to swallow, that was seeing some different things at Nescus than they were throughout the rest of the district. We know that, there's been a lot of work done instructionally as a result of that by Mrs. Blake Davis with Mr. Falkowski and Mrs. Dowling. We know that we received some data last year from our current ninth graders, who at the time were eighth graders, regarding their experiences, social, emotionally, that we had some concerns with, that we have been working to resolve. In addition to that, we do have some, some concerns with interactions amongst the full school community, and we do know as adults that the research shows us very clearly that how we interact and how positively we feel about our environment does directly affect the students. So I can talk to you at a very specific level about the strategies that are being put in place to work with the students. Mrs. Dowling, Mrs. P. Cork, who's our Crainville Vice Principal, and Mr. Messina, who's our experienced Vice Principal at Wacona and Long Term Dean, are working closely together to align their practices around student discipline, and around things that are positive interventions around discipline, that student discipline, specifically when it's antisocial behavior that rises to the level of bullying. Those are absolutely concerns at Nescus, and there are ways that we're addressing those, but it would not be fear, I don't think, or transparent to tell you that that is the main concern or the root cause, because these are students who are moving through other buildings fairly successfully. We do have some concerns with an overall root cause culturally, and we are on our third administrative team in three years. Fortunately, I do not see that being a fourth administrative team next year. You have the right people on the bus, in the seats, committed to doing the work, but relationship building takes time, and I think you'll see there's some things in here that they are doing. So, the parent who spoke, spoke about a subset of students who are moving on to the high school. That subset of students, Mr. Robb and Mr. Messina are more than aware of and looking forward to working with, and we're certainly looking at ways to make sure that student behavior is positive, that students are receiving consistent discipline, and are receiving opportunities to restore mistakes they make, because these are young children. But at the root of it, what we're really working on is building a culture of positivity, where people work together and feel that they're being heard by the right people. Our concern, my, Mr. Falkowski's, Mrs. Dowling's, was beyond what you heard. There's a concern with eighth grade students. If you noticed, the parent indicated they'd been approached by staff, and as educators, we need to work through these things together, and that to us is a root cause of a cultural concern. If you're, as a staff member, feeling that your recourse is to contact parents about students, there's a cultural issue that we really need to work through, because Pete and Joanne have their sleeves rolled up all day, every day, and then well after hours wanting to work through these problems, but they need to be the people who are leading the work. So, a couple of things are happening, and I think that Steve, uh, Joanne and Pete would like to come back to this committee in late June to tell you about their action plan for the 18, 19 school year. As you do know, they were appointed to their positions sometime around October, which is just an awesome time to find out you're the principal and vice principal of the school, but they really are going to be formulating a specific action plan for next year using all of this data. They have a consultant who they've been working with, that has been doing some coaching with our entire administrative team for some time now, who will be at Nescus all day tomorrow. And what we're really excited about is he has a full schedule of time spent with staff members, talking about the Nescus culture, talking about how he can work to bring people together, and to formulate an action plan. He'll be back two more times in June, and during that time, they'll be doing some culture building activities, and putting some specific things in place for next year. You'll also see there's some other things going on, because we have internal expertise as well that we can use. So some staff members, for example, Steve Messina from Wacona, will be working directly with Joanne after the seniors graduate to be aligning some of their practices stronger, that work very well at Wacona. So, there's a lot of things that are happening, but I think that to be transparent, it would be easy to stand here and talk to you about eighth graders, and eighth graders in May, and how you solve those problems, but the root cause really at this point is that we have a cultural issue that really needs to become a community that work functionally together with a consistent administrative team. So, I feel very fortunate to have that team and to support them, and I think that they're doing good work, but it takes time to build the relationships, to make some changes that have been needed for some time. So certainly, I hope that was somewhat of a, a kind of summary you have. I actually shared with you, in the interest of transparency, exactly what was sent to the staff, exactly what's going on, and you can see that there, and you'll actually see an action plan in June that has specific things in it. Not to say things haven't been happening all year long, but there is some benefit to having a year-long perspective as an administrator in a school. You have to go through different things. You have to go through the UCAS administration period. You have to go through the spring with eighth graders. You have to go through different events that happen throughout the course of the year, and these two individuals had to go through building a relationship with each other, which they built a very strong relationship, and we're very fortunate that they are committed long-term to Nescus. So that's kind of some overview, but certainly if there's questions, Pete and Joanne can speak very well as well about the work they're doing.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, I'm, I'm going to continue on, on that topic. It was later last week that I was parting two emails that went back and forth between the same parent and the administration on a similar but somewhat tangential topic, and I waited quietly and finally decided, after about six emails had gone back and forth, to basically insert myself and recommend that, you know, the emails back and forth is not an effective communication vehicle. And I had the sense, and this is my opinion, that it was being done as a paper trail, which is also somewhat divisive, I would say, in my, in my opinion. So that suggestion went out to the parents, and I encouraged the verbal, you know, the face-to-face communication, which is really the only way to solve a problem that parents, students, administration, and staff are having. After that email, the reply came back to me, so I took it upon myself to call a parent, and, you know, I kind of wanted to make it clear that the committee needs to hear when parents or staff or administration has any concerns, at any level. And, you know, when it comes to the committee, it becomes the committee's problem, and the committee, of course, is going to rely on the administration to, to make an assessment of the problem and try to address it. So the point there is, I tried to reinforce, you know, there's a line, there's a, a line between what the committee does and what the Superintendent does, and how we interact, and, you know, the committee's primary, prime responsibility is, is, you know, hiring a Superintendent, evaluating the Superintendent, and then we have policy and budget. We rely on the Superintendent to work with administrators in the buildings and the staff in the buildings to resolve teacher and, or to resolve student-parent issues. And that's kind of what the line is. So, we're not going to insert ourselves with the principals, with the staff, to try to resolve again those, those issues at the student-parent level. So I just wanted to let you know that that did happen, and, you know, I'm trying to work with the parents as well, to let them know that we're engaged in this problem, but really let the administration work through it, and the school committee's going to sit here and wait to hear how it turns out.
The only other thing I add quickly is that this is like a roller coaster of emotions, when you do care so deeply about solving the problem, and you get caught up in the moment, but that we, we have had some real honest face time. Pete and Joanne have had the bulk of it with the Nescus staff, and I do think it's telling that they have kind of gone back to roll up their sleeves and work together. They know there was a meeting tonight, but obviously, the meetings that are happening in the building are meeting their needs to, to start to have a voice. So I think that's optimistic, because that's where the work should happen. So they're not always easy conversations, but they're honest conversations with the right people. So we'll report back in, in June, where that's at, with an actual plan that you'll be able to see and look at, but we do appreciate referring back the concerns, because I think it's Mr. Robb that often refers to us, who is, you know, you have to sometimes have a family meeting, and the family has to work out their issues, and they live together every day. So we appreciate you, you giving that support to us.
Okay. Mr. Gazillo?
Yeah. I'll just say that, you know, I continue, as I have for the last eight years, to have, you know, families come up to me at different sporting events and other events at the schools and at school grounds, and, you know, this topic hasn't really changed, and the folks in the seat on the bus have changed, but the, the way we've handled it, we don't seem to have a good handle on, on bullying at any level at any of our schools. I'd like to see that we're having, the school committees being informed at each school committee meeting, on something about bullying, bullying practices, and our efforts at each school committee meeting. I think it's well worth putting in the time to see if we'll engage in further discussion about it, and I agree with Sean, I don't think we need to be in at the building level. But I can tell you that even this week, I had discussions about it. Yesterday, as a matter of fact, I warned my neighbors who has children in the elementary school, concerned about coming to the middle school. So, you know, in our community, little things like that spread like wildfire, and, and it's just been consistent over the last eight years. Sean and I have both had trouble, and then went through the middle school, the last three or four years, and even longer, more recently than Sean, and I can tell you that there's still a significant issue there.
And we will absolutely update you on that. I just don't want to be less than transparent, saying that the issue, there's some cultural issues going on within the, the staff as well, that we've got to give some time to, because that does impact the students. So that's definitely an absolute part of it. We just want to be transparent, it's not the whole story.
Thank you.
And not to minimize what you've said at all, because I totally agree with you, but the transition from elementary school to middle school sends parents into a dizzy, no matter where it is. It's going from a protected, cloistered environment to the big, bad middle school, where bad things happen. So I think in terms of making those cultural shifts, we have to just remember that it's kind of universal, and many parents feel that angst about letting go and moving on.
Yeah, I think in this case, Robert, though, it really is parents hearing what exactly's going on, and parents standing up here for the, you know, the first time in a long time, and actually standing up for what they see as something that's not happening the way it should be. So, no, I agree with you, I mean, that, that transition is a difficult one, and it's a difficult one, again, I think, even from middle to high school. But there are some consistent things that happen in our community, and everybody knows who the folks are involved. We just haven't seen, well, come up with a good way to handle it yet, so.
Anyone else? Okay, the last thing we're going to be withholding is dismissive to Mr. Gazillo's point. I will say, though, that in my experience that I've had at the middle school, as in the last two to four years anyway, is that there's always two sides of the story. I know that, you know, you hear parents want to be defending their kids to the hilt, and go, or often agree that as parents who are sitting at this table, and, you know, we often want to go into a one-on-one, when, you know, we get calls from the administration about our kids, saying that, well, it's not our, it's not our kids' fault. And that's just how it is. That's the reality of how the situation's always going to be, but there is the other element, that there's the other side of the story that we always have to consider, and, you know, junior or little missy may not be perfect in, in that world, and I've run through that with my family as well, and, and I've had the situations where when you get the whole story, you go, oh yeah, okay, I understand, so it's, we've got to make some adjustments at home, and try to address this problem there, too. So yeah, there's going to be problems in the middle school, I mean, certainly, and it seems to be centered there, because it's that age when the kid's ennequin system is in, you know, full, full overdrive, and, and I think we all understand that aspect of it, too. I've spoken with other superintendents about this, in fact, that very same day, I spoke now with our Superintendent, but with Jake Candless, and we had a good back-and-forth discussion about that, and he says, it's no different in Pittsfield, it's no different in, at Mount Braylock, it's no different in South County, it's no different in Lee Lennox, and I can tell you that I've heard some situations about Lennox, too, you know, based upon my family's relationships with some Lennox parents. So it's not isolated to us, and, you know, I think we do a good job trying to address these issues, and I think the only thing we can do is, is always seek excellence and opportunities for improvement. So, I don't like to go on a tirade like that, but I, I needed to say that. Okay, anyone else? All right, back to the evaluation. So what we have to do is, is have this evaluation done and turned in by the end of June, it goes to Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Most importantly, it's where our Superintendent uses to try to assess her performance over the past year and make improvements moving forward, set the goals for next year. So I, the first point I sent you, I apologize, I used the goals from last year, I sent you an updated one, you have the updated one before you this evening. So there's three parts to this. If you look at the step two of the, of the first page, you'll see that it wants you to go to page four through seven first. So that's where we're going to go. There are four standards that we rate the Superintendent. Standard one is instructional leadership on page four. Standard two is management and operations on page five, and standard three on page six is, standard three, then finally on page seven is standard four, professional culture. So what you need to do is, you'll see at the bottom, they've got some examples of objective evidence, that you need to rate the Superintendent on all these indicators that are within those standards. For instance, on standard one, if you go back to page four, there's five indicators. So we need to assess either unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. The reason proficient is in, is shaded there is because basically, when Desi came out with this back in 2013, I believe, they said everyone should be getting no higher than proficient, because they're trying to get a gauge of how this instrument was working. And by the way, this is consistent with the teacher's evaluation, other administrators' evaluation. This committee adopted this standard with no changes back in 2013. So this is where we need to go, and then you can put down a, an overall rating for that standard, and you fill in any comments that you, that you want to put in there to reinforce what your ratings are. You do that for all four, all four standards, you then come back based upon the summary for those, each of those four standards, and you will fill in on page one, step two. So just reflect in step two what your final rating was for each one of those standards. And then from step two, you'll move to the overall, your overall evaluation for the Superintendent, which is again, one of those four scores. Proceeding onto that, what was the impact of student learning for the evaluation, for the Superintendent's performance? You assess it as low, moderate, or high. And then finally, you do goals, which are, which are indicated on page three. Rate one of those goals, and the categories, rate each one of those four goals, either as did not meet some progress, significant progress, met, or exceeded. Okay? And then bring that back to page one for the assessment of the goals. With all that, it's, it's a little bit of work, but I'll ask the committee, send these back to me, either electronically or hard copy to, to Mr. Bueno by June 15th. That way I can have everything compiled for the assessment that will be at the last school committee meeting in June. What I do is I take that, and I basically put it all on this spreadsheet. What I do is I take that and I basically put it all on this spreadsheet. Many of you have seen the spreadsheet. And based upon the majority of any of these categories or ratings, that's what goes into the final. And then that gets summed up and made as a final evaluation rating that we'll give the superintendent and vote on on that date. So I know that's a lot to digest. Those of you who have seen this before, it's a little easier, it's routine. But if you have any questions, feel free to send me an email, call me at home. I think you should all have my number and we'll go from there. Any questions, Seacrest?
No questions. I just want to remind people that if you're going to make any kind of feedback, actually comments, put context around that. So make sure you fill in the comments to put context around how you grade, especially if you do something that's below par, for sure. Otherwise, it doesn't mean anything unless you put context in it. So make sure you add comments.
All the comments are taken and given to the superintendent. They're given back to you as the package. This is public information. Each of your individual assessments is public information. And then, of course, the final rating is public information. So that's all I have on that. Anyone else? Okay. Going on with communications, again, we have the November 2018 school committee election. Those receipts are up for election. We have three more town meetings. We've gone through four and we have three of the four towns haven't passed the budget. Thank you, the superintendent, for keeping us up to date on that. And at this moment, we'll move on to subcommittee reports and recommendations. First, we have curriculum. Dr. Craft, please.
We met today prior to the meeting here and Leslie, Blake Davis, was good enough to spend some time talking to us about the Eureka Math Program. And she's pretty excited about it and after we heard about it, I think we're pretty excited about it too. It's a program that is going to be adopted for grades six through eight if we recommend it. And it was brought to her attention by a teacher at the middle school and she did some visitations at Bourne and Groton Dunstable, am I saying it correctly? And saw it in action. And she looked at it through the lens of UDL and certainly from Dunstable where Kate Millick is assistant superintendent. It's very prevalent. She thinks that it's more of a problem-solving approach and it's authentic and encourages higher-order thinking. Teachers will be able to offer choices to students and there wasn't an online component initially, but now there is an online component. So she's very pleased with that. And still suggested that teachers might use decimals and Khan Academy for reinforcing some of the skills. She gave us some literature from everyports.org that rated the program. And of all of the math programs around that are available, it scored incredibly high, 13 out of 14 on one and 14 out of 14 on all the other contests. So I was very familiar with another program, Everyday Math, and it scored poorly and that's how I sort of graded it as well. So I felt good about the scoring system. Does anybody have anything else that they want to add? Rick was there, Bonnie, Nicole, and Ellen. No? Okay. Okay, so with that in mind, we agreed as a committee that we'd like to go forward with it. So we have resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approved Eureka as the six to eight mathematics curriculum as recommended by the Curriculum Subcommittee. Second?
Okay, we will look in a second to approve Eureka as the six to eight mathematics curriculum. Is there any discussion?
Is there any increase in cost with this? New program?
I think Leslie mentioned the cost of the program completely was a little less than other programs that she's looked at, that there's professional development that goes along with it. And I kind of like the professional development that isn't the one-stop, you know, coming in and giving you the information about it. But they come back and they talk to you and ask you to reflect on it and how can they help you? So it's a two-prong professional development and I think that's probably worth the money because you have to have the teachers on board and teaching correctly and I think that the program design will allow for that.
What, basically, have we budgeted?
Yes, so we budgeted for math curriculums, but we were really kind of trying to decide between two and they were not fitting our needs and we kind of had this dark horse of Eureka that really has come forward, that meets our needs and happens to be more cost-effective. So we budgeted a little bit more than we need, but we also had budgeted, Melissa, an increase in the professional development line for next year. And I think that it'll offset there because we will use more professional development because it's a, I think it's an excellent program, it's a quality program, it is a complex program to teach. So we do need to have some professional development, but the math curriculum that was budgeted for was slightly higher.
When was the last time this was overall? We're always hearing how these new, I hate to say, fangled things. I mean, how long do they go, are they in existence for? When was the last one that was put in place?
For middle school?
Or, yes, right, we're replacing this, we're going to replace something with this, correct?
We haven't had an aligned middle school math curriculum in my time here. We have had a K-6 curriculum that started with Debbie at Kittredge and then rolled out fully, which is our Envisions program that started probably my second year here, that we do have in place fully in K-5. But we have had more, I don't want to use the word piecemeal, but it would probably be the honest word, if I'm using the right word. Leslie could find a better word, but piecemeal curriculums in the middle school for quite some time in seventh and eighth, if it predates me.
And we also know that there's a need at the middle school for comprehensive math program that's going to align with the standards. So I think the timing was right to develop, to search for a program that would better meet our needs. The other thing that impressed me too was that in the districts that have used this program, their scores have improved and the achievement gap has lessened. So those are all really good factors.
Mr. Lock, though?
What other districts in the county are nearby?
Not in the county, but Bourne District, which Leslie said is pretty reflective of our district and also Groton Dunstable are using it. Were there others, Leslie, that you're aware of?
Those are the two that I looked at because I wanted to look at districts that were more like ours. And the other piece that I wanted to look at very closely was closing the achievement gap because that's a goal of ours. So that's a statistic that I looked at pretty closely.
So Sean had a good question, just to clarify, one of the, when we say more like ours, we're looking for districts of similar size and similar socioeconomic that have had a similar challenge. And our challenge has been a persistent achievement gap between students with disabilities and students without, as well as students really not pushing into that upper category, into advanced. And Bourne and Groton Dunstable data-wise come out very similar to us and they've been more successful than us to date in closing the achievement gap. I do believe also, Leslie, correct me if I'm wrong, why do I believe New York City Public Schools uses Eureka?
There are several districts in New York that do use Eureka because Eureka was originally, it originally came out of an initiative in New York State called Engage New York. So it was, it was actually, it was grant-funded, a group of individuals were grant-funded to actually come up with a very high-quality gap program that could be offered to districts in the state of New York for free. So a lot of the resources, most of the resources are actually, you can view them online and they had a lot of success with it. And then from there, it was purchased by a company called Great Lines. And then it became, it's a program that's fairly progressive, fairly innovative. It's, so we're kind of out of, I feel like we're sort of at the forefront of Berkshire County and that we're looking to this math program.
Yeah, we heard that we were at the forefront of the last one that came before us as well.
And we're keeping with that one, K-5. It's a little bit more canned.
Well, yeah, it wasn't the math ones. I don't.
Oh, Teachers College, probably. You're right. Units of study that Leslie started at Washington.
We do have opportunities for sharing professional development with other districts and we have students that move between districts. So I wouldn't expect it to be number one criteria, but I think it should be considered when we select a curriculum.
Yeah, so this program is very closely aligned with the standards. So I would say that that was a key criteria, that it's very closely aligned with the standards. As a matter of fact, it goes above and beyond the standards. So I would hope that any of our students, once we're sort of firmly established with this program, that they would be able to go anywhere, that they would have a firm grasp of the expectations for all grade levels.
Because you did work very closely with Judy Rush from Pittsfield, who was looking at Big Ideas, but was it Big Ideas or Go Math? Big Ideas.
Big Ideas, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we were hitting the ceiling too soon with it. So we didn't go with something below, but we went with something that we felt went past what that curriculum would offer us.
What Leslie had said in the subcommittee was that what other programs we're offering were more segmented and sort of, and programs that once you, everyone has to finish this one segment before moving on to the next one, before moving on to the next one. So you sort of start growth of students who grasp the concepts faster, whereas this, it sort of just goes along the line of the students. So those students who don't grasp the concepts so fast can still move at their own pace, but those who can move up above and beyond can keep moving forward without having to wait for everybody else to catch up.
No question. The statement is progressive. I know we're in the Wacona High School, you know, a lot of what we're doing with the design group on 21st century learning. Does this Eureka Math, does it have any of the concepts that are, you know, supposing 21st century learning, the Polish needs there, cooperation?
Yes, sorry, if I might answer, the thing that Leslie kept stressing was that it's a problem-solving approach. And that's certainly something that 21st century learning embraces. So it's not just learning rote, although there is value to numerical fluency, but it's looking at things through problem solving.
Like projects?
Project-based and it's also very UDL-able.
Typically, with math programs, what I'll see is you start out with very, as Barbara was describing, very rote kinds of activities. And then by the time you get to the end, it's the problem-solving section. And what I really like about Eureka is it begins with problem solving from the very beginning. And it also has a variety of strategies for problem solving. The way it's laid out, it's very simply laid out, but it also, it'll offer visuals for students who very much need a visual. But the student doesn't necessarily have to use the visual if they don't need the visual. It'll offer maybe a problem about decimals, but also it might have the fraction quick line. So it has, it really approaches it from the standpoint of very different learning styles and students can use what they need and they don't need to necessarily use the components that they don't need. But the other component I was explaining to the committee is you can, is that, you know, some of the visuals, like if you're in fifth or sixth grade, are very sophisticated. So it's not like you're saying, oh, I'm going to give you these little manipulative, I'm not going to give you something that's going to make you feel like you need extra support. It's a very sophisticated form of scaffolding the learning for those students. So from that standpoint, you know, I have to say, I really, I did like it because I feel like it's meeting the needs of all students. And I think that's probably part of the reason that the districts that I looked at are seeing they're closing their achievement gaps because students are going to be more motivated by that.
Mr. Robb?
Is there anything in this program or this thing that will help the parents? You know, because you lost me.
Yes.
But I mean, this is way probably above what I could ever teach my kids. And you, thank God I don't have to do it. But, you know, this is a big thing with parents is you get to a point where you can't help your kid do their homework. Is there, there are going to be things online to help the parent help the child do their homework?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons I was a little hesitant until they had an online component because I feel like that's a really important part of communication. But one of the things, the committee asked the same question, so it's an excellent question. One of the things I said to them is, that will be my, part of my job over the summer is to make sure I have, you know, a meeting with, I have meetings set up with families from Nescus so that they can come and talk to me about the program, that they can talk to teachers about the program. And additionally, that I have, you know, multiple means of representation for this math program. So I've hired copies of information going home. But also, it's also part of my job to have an online component that does, in a very user-friendly way, explain the program itself. I haven't done that yet, but I wanted to honor the process and the adoption process, but I will definitely do that.
And there is a parent resource.
There's a parent resource, yes.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all is in favor of approving Eureka as the six to eight mathematics curriculum in the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, then we went on to field trips. And there's an overnight field trip for the Wacona Latin Club to Rhode Island, December 3rd through the 5th, 2018. And Mr. Bradshaw will be taking, let me see, a few of the workers here, taking approximately 60 students. And it's a Monday to a Wednesday and grades nine through 12. They're going to a very full program, Monday to a Sunday to Wednesday. They start at 6:15 a.m. and they go through till 10:30 at night. So I'm exhausted just reading their itinerary. And the committee would like to move it forward. So we have resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve an overnight field trip for the Wacona Latin students to Rhode Island, December 3rd through 5th, 2018, as recommended by the Curriculum Subcommittee.
Second? We have a motion in a second to approve an overnight field trip for the Wacona Latin Club to Rhode Island, December 3rd through 5th, 2018. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Motion carries.
Okay, and we also had a field trip in the cheerleaders. This is over the summer, Friday, July 27th to Monday, July 30th. It's at Westfield State College. And this is the eighth year that they've done this, or seventh, I'm sorry. This is their seventh consecutive year. Again, they outlined a pretty rigorous itinerary for them. So we have resolved that the Central Berkshire School Committee approve an overnight field trip for the Wacona cheerleaders to Westfield State University, July 27th through 30th, 2018, as recommended by the Curriculum Subcommittee.
Second? We have a motion in a second to approve an overnight field trip for the Wacona cheerleaders to Westfield State University, July 27th through 30th, 2018. Is there any discussion?
Obviously, they made it to nationals last year, so they must be doing something.
Because of this.
A lot of hard work.
Yes.
And a lot of.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
And we don't have another meeting scheduled yet, but we will because we're going to be talking about improvement practices at our next meeting. But I'll let you know at the next meeting and that will be in June.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Craft, please? Okay, we'll move on to finance subcommittee.
Thank you. We had a very brief meeting tonight before the school committee meeting. The only significant item on the agenda was the review of the contract for the reappointment of legal counsel for FY 2019. Dupre Law has been our legal counsel for some time now. The contract is more or less the same with the exception that there was a slight increase this year. After a small amount of discussion, the committee unanimously agreed to support Dupre Law as our counsel in FY 19. Okay, we do have a motion.
Thank you. Give your my voice.
We have resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee appoint Dupre Law Office as its general counsel for labor in relation to the Central Berkshire Regional School District from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, as recommended by the past time of Friday afternoon.
Second? Okay, we have a motion in a second for appointment of legal counsel. Is there any discussion?
What was the increase?
Seventy-five dollars a month.
I don't know.
Okay, seeing no further discussion. Opposed in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
I don't think it's a seven.
Motion carries.
All right, the only other item is that of importance is that on May 22nd, at the next finance subcommittee meeting, which will be 6 p.m. at Nescus, we'll be having ours there for a presentation on our investments. ours there for a presentation on our investments. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Are there any questions for, for finance? Then we'll move on to policy.
So I've been contacting with Mr. Haymeyer, so he had, we had had some trouble getting availability for a meeting, so we are meeting on June 12th at 6:00 in the central office, and we do have the anti-bullying policy on the agenda, because there's going to be some work done between now and then by our vice principals to update that and to align their practices and to make sure it's current, as well as there was a change to the food service policy that came out that we needed to react to from MASC, and then we're going to be preparing a presentation on the strategic plan, so June 12th at central office at 6:00.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to personnel.
We have a negotiations scheduled for Wednesday, the 16th, with the teachers, and other than that, I have nothing planned.
Any other reason to run an executive session?
No.
That's good. And Mr. West is not here to report for technology, but I believe they're not having any.
They're not having any.
Okay. And next up is Wacona Building Project.
So we did just have a meeting, and we approved the minutes that had to be certified to go with the submission to MSBA, so at this point, everything has been submitted to MSBA, and we are just waiting for their comments on our educational plan, and that will really get things going, because we'll have to respond to those comments with the support of the OPM from SCANSCA, and then our design team from DRA. Their next meeting is on May 24th, there'll be a small working group meeting immediately before the full school building committee to hopefully start to look at some of those comments we expect to receive at 3:00 p.m. in Sean Therrien's classroom, and at 4:30, the full building committee will meet. There was an addition sent out, Sean Therrien is the author of this, he does a great job around the Wacona School Building Project for May, there'll be another one that comes out in the beginning of June, the other items to make note of is June 19th and June 21st, which are Tuesday and Thursday, there are going to be community evenings again, now that's a short timeframe, but the calendar we're up against puts us at MSBA in early September to bring an option forward for what the school will ultimately, what will be voted on for the school to ultimately look at, look like, so we need to get community input on those options, so those evenings, there'll be double headers again, most likely at the same venues, something like Windsor and Wacona on the 19th, and Beckett and Kittredge on the 21st, will be DRA, Carl, the principal from DRA, going over the options and showing how they would rate them, and asking the community for their thoughts on that, so those are just some things to be aware of that are coming up, we will get way more information out of Beltout, we just wanted to get dates on the calendar right now.
Any questions?
So we're going to have building options, building possibilities on those dates?
Yes.
Do we know how many?
I believe we're at thirteen, Mr. Rob, thirteen.
We're going to see all thirteen on those dates?
I don't know.
That we don't know, May 24th, we're going to talk about that though at the school building committee meeting, as to will they bring all thirteen forward or narrow them down first, there are some that look pretty obviously, not necessarily things that would meet our needs, and others that look like they would, but on the 24th, we'll ask that question.
I would think we would have crowds at those meetings, everybody's been asking, what does it look like?
Yes.
What does it look like?
And this literally shows you exactly what it looks like with a, yeah, with a grading way of assessing it, like everything from, like things they call temporary costs, do you need a, Mr. Rob knows this so well, do you need modulars, do you not, to permanent costs, as far as what the facilities will cost to run, and it almost grades each one as to how you would look at it, and I think that that, that is available as well, or will be very shortly online from DRA, that document.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I mean, and a minimum, they have to address the three categories that MSBA requires, one is a complete renovation of the existing buildings, secondly, a renovation of the existing building plus adding to the existing building, taking away and/or adding, and then finally, is just going with a completely new building, so from what I recall, there's at least multiple options for each one of those categories, most of the options that I remember seeing from weeks ago was a brand-new building, and it's kind of different configurations moving around the different places on the immediate Wacona property, you know, as we stated before, we did want to look at over by Nescus as an option, but DRA pointed out that the wetlands considerations were there, we would never get past that, so that kind of got immediately thrown to the side, and we're restricted to the property that we're on, the footprint of the property that we're on.
Do you think that will then cost estimates?
Mm-hmm, ranges, I mean, they stay in ranges, but yes.
I don't think that's an option going forward without having a cost associated with it, so.
Definitely, yeah.
We would need that.
Definitely, they definitely do the running, you know, they have those up there as well, and they'll start to fine tune those once the comments come back.
And they will talk about what's allowable, allowable versus what's not allowable by MSBA guidelines, that will all be broken out.
So again, like Mr. Antel said, you expect to have crowds, we'd love to have crowds, but any suggestions on getting the word out, we'll go through all of that next time of all of our strategies, but if you have suggestions, please do share them.
I did some feedback on the last workshops that we had, and there was some confusion as to really what it was about, I think the people I was sitting with thought it was more of just a hesitation, and they were pleasantly surprised that they were being booked.
Oh, okay.
So, and I know it went out in the letter, and I know sitting in these meetings, I got it, but I still think it was unclear, thank you.
Right, because people are much more likely, you know, they're not just watching something they could watch online, because we're sharing it'll be online, but if you think you could watch it first, nobody, you can, thank you very much, that's for you, Beth, Nicole.
I think it's probably important to reinforce that this will be an interactive session.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, I feel that, you know, I think it's very, very important, especially when people are considering what the options are, make it very, you know, see all the designs, from basic to ready to new, and this is their time, make their voices heard, and can, besides that enough, that's hopefully the way you'll get a good turnout, is by making, this is their opportunity to say yay, you know, yes, to basic, to ready, to new, and making their voices heard, so.
Okay, there's nothing else on that topic, we'll move forward to superintendent's reports and recommendations.
So I think I've covered most of it over the course of the meeting, if you do have a chance, if you didn't already see in the Berkshire Eagle, two of our Creightonville teachers were highlighted as classrooms of the week, really well deserved, the only other thing that I'll say, because I think everything that is in here, I pretty much said, it is teacher appreciation week, and I had the opportunity to walk through each of the buildings, and it just, it really does remind you how lucky we are to have the educators we have in the classroom, and then I just, I do also want to, and I'm like, the problem of being like forty weeks pregnant and doing these kinds of things, acknowledge our administrative team tonight, I have had the pleasure since I've been here of working with a strong team, but this, this is the peak of that, I mean, this is incredible, this team here tonight wanted to be here to support Pete and Joanne, they knew Nescus was on the agenda, they knew Leslie was presenting the math curriculum in her extremely eloquent, highly intelligent way, which was incredibly impressive, and they wanted to be here for that, and there is a lot going on for all of them professionally and personally, you see when I'm doing the Wacona School Building Project, I'm looking at Mr. Rob, and he's not, he's not avoiding eye contact, he's looking back, not that he wants to, but in general, you know, you when you're in this seat, sometimes everyone's like, oh, that's you, that's not how this operates, and if I needed anything from any of them throughout the course of this report, I am so fortunate, Melissa and Greg as well, but to have a team that is so invested in each other's success, and the success of the kids, and has such a district-wide focus, so I do just want to acknowledge that they are here tonight, and they are, they are here, they work with me constantly, and just are an incredible team, so I thank you guys for all you do and for being here.
Do you want to go to the statistics? I had a follow-on to the Nescus discussion.
I think I went through it all, the USTE and the consultants and all of that.
All right.
If anyone has any questions about any, but I did highlight, we did the, the, what do we, see, I'm going to do it again, Mr. Rob, what do we call that, the decision day?
The decision day.
Yes, yes, I was like, the decision day, and everyone whose college gear fit wore it, mine, next year, but we did that, and that's become more of a district-wide event, Mr. Rob has a lot of those kinds of things that the other administrators have supported, having students walk through all the schools, so today, they were all out together, and Beckett, Washington, observing classrooms, and giving Mary Kay feedback on instruction, so it's just really become quite a cohesive team that really takes a district-wide approach, and to have this deep of resources for each building is far more than any of us could do on our own, so, thank you guys for being here.
Okay, again, the superintendent's noted Senior Activity Week, and I'll just note it's May 27th coming up soon, is the senior prom night in Impact Sugar Village, Thursday, May 31st is class night at 7:00 a.m. at Wacona Gymnasium, Friday, June 1st, 2018 is the senior assembly, and then Sunday, the graduation is at 1:00, and that's on June 3rd.
Yes, and join us at 12:15 if you can, we do like a little coffee hour before, the administrative team has been there the last three years, and I think it's a nice way to kind of send off the kids from their full time with us, many of them have been here for quite some time.
Okay. Superintendent has no personnel changes to note, and I'm not familiar, Chair's not familiar with any old business, and under new business, does anyone have anything they want to report to the committee? Mr. Rock?
I've, anybody's read the paper the last couple of days, Grape Beringson put in, is going to put in effect a ban on single-use water bottles, I know we've talked in the past, Wacona's got a couple of water fountains that allows you to fill up your water bottles, Nescus has at least one, I thought, and I think Kittredge has one, we have a report on where we stand as far as getting the other schools fitted, because eventually it's going to come here, and, you know, it's not a bad thing to get rid of these stupid things, I think, get rid of the nip bottles, I think the whole town of Dalton may better look at it, but, you know, these, it's just stuff, so, you know, we could have a report on where we stand as far as, I know a couple of years ago, we thought about doing that and talked about doing that, so.
Do that, I'll put it up. The only thing, the only thing Chair wanted to bring to the committee's attention, is part of the warrants package, we have, we did receive a letter from a member of the Covington Ad-Hoc Education Committee, so they're expressing their frustration, and we're going to make this a topic at the next school committee meeting, so we'll discuss that then, and determine the path forward. So is there any remarks for the committee at this time? Okay, entertain, adjourn, motion for adjournment. Second, motion second, all in favor? Okay, this meeting stands adjourned.